Okay, not a definite, this is what we were gonna do.
All right, so we're gonna start, we're gonna go ahead and just while we finish our break, why don't we just let Ron go ahead and take us to the management's report?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, this evening, we do have a couple of guests that will be giving us some overview. One is our annual presentation from our external auditors at KPMG, and city auditor John Sanderland will introduce them. We also have Ted Henneffin, our general manager for Hampton Road Sanitation District, or HRSD. He's gonna do an overview about a sustainable water recycling program that's pretty visionary. David Riggs, our public works director, is gonna have an overview of stormwater fee credit program that we're proposing to you in part based on state mandates. But before we do that, we do have a couple of strategic initiatives we wanted to give you an update on, and the city attorney wants to make sure that everyone understands our, the ordinance that we have on the docket of dealing with tax abatement. Winter Bendah is gonna give us an overview of the Nighthawks program.
Evening, mayor, members of city council. You recall, seven weeks ago, approximately July 15th, 16th, the mayor and city council rolled out a pilot program called Norfolk Nighthawks. We culminate those seven weeks this Friday. It began at two recreational centers, remember Huntersville and Berkeley, and in early August, we opened up in Norview. So we've seen, while Kim's getting it up here, that's right, next slide, the three locations. What was predominantly, or originally, the community playing basketball, or young adults, 18, 25, or 33-year-olds with Norfolk police, has been much more than that. We've seen opportunities with Opportunity Inc., TCCs, Centura College, and a myriad of other community partners that you'll see on the screen here, including the faith-based community and many of the civic leagues, who have really been behind this effort. If you go back one slide, you'll see through last weekend, some of the numbers at each of the recreational centers, a little bit lower at Norview because we waited until the 5th. We started at Huntersville and Berkeley. Again, we culminate this Friday, the 26th. We're gonna keep all three centers open because the communities, it was community requested, community supported, and community activated, and it's principally your vision in getting something together, and we did it with your support, the community's support, and many of the people in this room. And if I can take one more second to show you a couple pictures, hope I don't embarrass anybody, but very cool events. And again, remember, it was Friday and Saturday nights, 10 until 2:00 a.m., so I can tell you there are folks out until 2:00 a.m., so it was fantastic. So again, this Friday, if you have an opportunity, please come on out. Ms. Johnson has a mean free throw shot, so, but again, thank you for your time and vision with this. It's been a wonderful effort, and something that we're gonna work through, kind of the data on, and come back to you with the plan. We believe it has very good merit, and it's something that we will grow in the coming months. Thank you.
What was the attendance like at 1:00, 1:00 a.m.?
At 1:00 a.m., depending on where it was, like at Norview, I'll say the first Friday that it opened, Ms. Johnson, you were there, I don't, we didn't stay until 1:00 o'clock, but there was 121 people over the course of that evening, and it was still at its height at 12:30, 1:00 o'clock. Depending on, usually, there was a couple of weekends, if you remember, there were rain, I will tell you, people still came out. And there wasn't any time that I can recall that there wasn't at least people at 1:00, maybe even till way 1:30. But everyone got home safely, and it's been, it's been wonderful. Any other questions?
Are we looking at extending the dates? Maybe like until early November-ish, you know, just because it's still kind of warm, and, you know, people are out doing things, maybe, you know, just to extend it, and especially like maybe in Norview, because we kind of got started there a little bit later than we did with the others, but, you know.
So what I'd recommend, if it's all right, some of the data that we've seen is the 18 through 13, 13, 18 through 25 or 33-year-olds, we've seen a precipitous drop in some of our attendance because matriculating back to school or into other efforts. And so what we thought is either holidays and/or fall or summer breaks, but also we're planning a, we call it a league play, that would, some of the more sustainable attendees that we've seen, maybe we create leagues that would help support that. So rather than, for now, open up and extended, I would recommend that we look at the recesses, the holidays, and then in the early winter, maybe league play.
And also, what we saw was that there were students there who were playing basketball at Norview, and they had signed contracts, well, not contracts, but they had committed to some really big colleges, and they came out to support the community. It was really interesting to see the number of colleges.
I was very nervous that night, because many of the kids were going to Texas A&amp;M.
Yes, and we were watching them carefully, slow down.
We actually had a NBA player from Miami Heat, whose nephew is at Berkeley, or cousins at Berkeley, he came out. We had the city of Fairfax, and Portsmouth visited to see how the program was run. So it's, it's been very, we had work release here downtown, who brought a very eclectic, kind of artsy, they had some good music, which was great, and everyone enjoyed. So it's not just been simply the neighborhoods that you understand of Berkeley, Huntersville, and maybe Norview, it's been citywide. There's an interest in Ocean View to bring it there. So we're just trying to figure out how we do this and maybe create a sustainable piece that would work for everyone. Again, because our target ages were 18 to 25, a little bit older, 30.
You could do, wow, Robin, you could do Huntersville one weekend, Berkeley one weekend, Ocean View, I mean, you know, you could, and it would, and kind of like the first weekend of every month is this, and the second weekend of every month is, you know, another location. That's just an opportunity, I mean, and idea. I have to think when you say work release, because I think literally work release.
I agree with you.
I do, I go, work release is there.
We got it, we caught it.
Thank you.
Mayor, when we last met five weeks ago, it was announced about a lifelong learning strategic initiative, and Sabrina Joy-Hogg is gonna give us an overview of that initiative.
So at that meeting, we called it Ready to Learn, but we've, we're gonna term it, we're gonna put our own words into it and call it Ready to Thrive, and it's to provide wraparound services for children in the schools. It's not to enter the classroom. We are working with Norfolk Public Schools with their Office of Interagency Collaboration and Wraparound Services. Dr. Sharon Berdson has been appointed to contact and talking. So it's, it's to develop a program, a pilot program, that provides wraparound services from mentoring to tutoring, to kids' haircuts, to eyeglasses, to hearing aids, whatever it is a child needs throughout the course of the year. And as we develop this program, we're looking for sponsors, and we've actually identified three community sponsors right now that will assist the child throughout the year. We're looking for several more. Norfolk Public Schools has identified 42 students throughout the city. And to kick off this program, we thought we would do a Back to School Fest, and that's gonna occur on the Saturday. There was a lot of discussion about different types of programs, but as we developed this program with Norfolk Public Schools, said we'd start off with the Back to School Fest, where it's a targeted audience. It's with NRHA residents, students who are living in public housing and who receive Housing Choice vouchers, and also the 42 students that Norfolk Public Schools has identified. So we've sent out invites, we've sent out postcards and reminders, we've done door-to-door with NRHA. We've had an overwhelming support from the community. We have the Department of Health there, CHKD, EVMS, who are gonna be doing school entry physicals, immunizations, vision screening, dental services. We have about four barbers that are lined up to provide free haircuts. Norfolk Public Schools will be there with pre-K registration. HRT's coming with student bus pass signup. We've got a lot of community partners that are gonna come and provide services, and then also we'll get a tally of what other services are needed for these students. School supplies and backpacks. Centura College has donated 1,500 backpacks along with some other community partners. I mean, it's just been a great community support. So we invite you to come out. Again, this is for a targeted audience. We were worried about having enough supplies and enough services for the targeted population. So some of the community partners, like I said, we've been meeting for the past three weeks, twice a week, and it's just been a great collaboration. Yes, they're coming. Norfolk Scope from 10:30 to 1:30. We are looking for volunteers, if anybody wants to come out.
Sabrina, the 42 scholars that you have identified. Okay, well, MPS has identified. Are they from various schools?
Yes.
I understand you have the targeted.
Yes, those are from various schools. That was totally their decision.
Okay.
We explained what the program was, what the council's vision was. It is, that's the longer-term project. The Back to School Fest is just on launch of the Ready to Thrive Initiative.
Okay.
So the 42 students is who we hope to work with throughout the year.
If somebody wanted to donate, like, school supplies or something, can they donate them where?
Julia Martin, poor Julia Martin with the budget office has been coordinating this whole thing.
I mean, is there somewhere in City Hall that they can drop them off if they want to?
Yes, yes, or just drop it off at the scope.
Okay. Probably don't want that the day of. Having been there, done that, you don't want that the day of.
No, we're actually stuffing backpacks on Thursday.
Okay.
And how many volunteers do you need, and what capacity, timeframe?
Julia Martin.
So we have like 110 volunteers right now. We need people like general weighfinding, checking-in volunteers, helping with food service. So I think we need like about 150, so.
Do you have a volunteer sign up online?
Yes, we do. It's not online, but we do have a contact that we can give you.
Maybe we could publicize that. I'd like to put it out on social media. It's okay, or no?
Yeah, let's, let's have a sideline discussion on that, because it just grows, and it becomes a citywide event, and then it becomes a.
She's talking about volunteers.
I know. We, we just went through that with Norfolk Public Schools, when they put it out with volunteers, and it just, the message got a little tangled up.
So like, when it first came to me, and I immediately said, send it out to everyone.
I mentioned that the downtown Norfolk Civic League, because they're looking for some volunteer opportunities, and they wanted to participate as well. So we didn't, I wasn't sure how to connect them, so. The good news is, the city of Norfolk has residents who care and want to be involved.
And we'll take them.
Well, Sabrina, let me just thank you and, and the team Norfolk, because I gave this idea just a few weeks ago to you and to Marcus, because we are committed to our children, our students, our scholars, as maybe refer to them, and that we should all refer to them as scholars, so that they get better outcomes. And we are serious about closing the achievement gap, and we really want to deliver students to Norfolk Public Schools who are ready to thrive, ready to learn, and to improve SOL scores and have better graduation rates. So let, you know, thank you for taking an idea, and you have actually given it, given it life. So I'm very appreciative. We're very appreciative, and look forward to being there on the 27th.
May I make a suggestion to add, perhaps looking, going, looking forward in the return to school, which is usually after Christmas, and Santa Claus, and all of that, when everybody's broke, and school supplies are not five for a dollar, maybe we could put something together like this before school starts after the winter break? You know, when all these supplies, kids have used them, and they're going into their second semester, it might be an opportunity for us to help this same group of students, revamping their school supplies in the second half of the year.
So part of, part of the program, so when we had our discussion, what I shared with Marcus and with Sabrina, this has to be sustainable. And so these 42 students that have been identified by Norfolk Public Schools, as well as the schools, the students who are in public housing or who are getting a Family Choice voucher, we will support and be with those scholars throughout the year. This is not a, this is, it can't be a one-time initiative. So part of my pitch to, to, to Team Norfolk, it has to be sustainable. In order to have better outcomes, in order to improve test scores, and have better graduation rates, and more importantly, closing the achievement gap, it has to be sustainable.
And we did talk about that as the committee meets, for the group that has now grown. We did talk about January event, we want to see how this goes, and then get the whole Ready to Thrive Initiative off the ground, and we'll promise a January event.
Will the 42 students be showing up to this event?
They have been invited.
Okay. And then, how many are you preparing for in addition to the 42 students?
3,000.
3,000. And then, it's anybody can come, and?
It's NRHA residents, so it's public housing residents. So John Konak has sent out an invite letter to every family that has a child from pre-K to 18, and it's anybody with the Housing Choice voucher.
And that 3,000?
Yes.
And Tommy, let me just add, one of the things that we are respecting is the governance of the, of the, of Norfolk Public Schools. We ask principals, teachers, and Dr. Berdson, you identify the students that are in need of services, and we will, as a city, we have an obligation to make sure, to ensure that we deliver you, a scholar, ready to thrive, free of disease, distress, despair. These are non-academic services.
I just, the reason why I ask, and I'm, and I'm not downing, this is great, that in the past, when I've dealt with donations to students, that they prefer to do it in a more confidential manner than actually showing up to an event like that. So I'm just, I'm curious to see that, particularly with Back to School items. And as much as I love that people donate pencils, when people donate pencils from the Dollar Tree, it's different than when you're getting good pencils. And so just as you continue to develop it down the road, it's a great activity, just, those are things to look at and consider. It's the same thing with shoes. I've, I've been part of buying shoes for kids when they go to school, and I've seen kids that need shoes walk up and say, I'm not wearing those, because there's an impression that they have to have a certain type of shoes in order to be popular, you know, in school. And so I prefer more of the confidential route with some of this. So this is good. I'm curious to see how many show up, and I know, but I know that some kids just don't like to be put out on blast that they are getting free stuff. But since this is just a housing authority event, I think that that will take care of some of that, since coming from similar communities, whereas if it was open to the public and anybody could show up, that that would be.
Let me just add, so, one of the things that we have built into this, Sabrina mentioned the partners, coaches, mentoring, to have these personal relationship with, like, big brother, big sister.
Right.
And some things will be done by the family planning assessment team. So some things and services won't be public, because there will be individual specialized needs, and it won't be on, for public knowledge that, you know, that this family is being supported or they're, so we take, we have taken that into consideration. So this is a, like a blanket, maybe the group approach, but once the family planning assessment team identifies special needs, then public health, public services will be able to work with that family, with that child's individual needs, and not be, you know, public.
And I'll say this too, I think I'm hearing two things that might just be getting commingled. I think there's a group of children that you guys are going to work with and support and mentor, that 42. But this particular event is open to Norfolk Public School students as well as NRHA students?
No.
Just NRJ.
Just the NRHA students.
Right, NRJ students.
Okay.
And the 42.
And the 42, okay, all right.
Some of the 42 are part of the.
Part of the NRJ, okay, all right, I understand now. And then the other thing I want to say is that, you know, having done these in the past, I've never had anybody show up and say they didn't want to accept school supplies. And if they didn't want to accept school supplies at a school supply drive, where you were giving away hot dogs and hamburgers, or whatever else it is you're gonna be doing, then they just didn't come. But we've had five or 600 kids show up on any given day where they, you know, they were happy, they got their bags, it wasn't a stigma attached to it or anything like that, and, you know, they went on their merry way, and they were just like any other kid.
Well, we actually had a partner that donated backpacks with their logo, and we said we can't use it. They actually, then they went out and bought just.
Because then you've identified every kid who got a free backpack.
Right, and we said we can't use it because of that. So our fire department is going to be doing all the cooking with the hot dogs. We've had the health director at the table, she advocated for healthy foods, so it's bananas, and I call it, it's called Pirate's Booty or baked chips, and it's water, it's no soda. So, and the police.
It's a fun event, where kids just come and get their stuff.
There'll be bounce houses, there'll be face painting. But it's not about school supplies or backpacks, it's about providing the services that they need to get back into school. So the immunizations, and the physicals, and the school entry physicals, so it's really driving it. And also the dental services and eye checkups are also there.
One of the things that, last thing I will say, one of the things that we discovered, there are children of scholars who start school the first day without eyeglasses, and not having had a hearing exam. Very difficult to learn, very difficult to thrive, if you can't see the blackboard, or you can't hear the instruction, and there, you know, there's a slippage there. So, and back to Tommy's point, we are depending on Norfolk Schools to identify, because we're not in the classroom. You have to identify the students who, the scholars who are in need of services, and we will provide those non-academic services to help support, undergird, public education. Okay, Ron?
Okay.
That's it?
I think the city attorney would like to go over, agenda item, regular item 28.
Announcements with the administration, item 28. And as you know, the mayor asked me and a group of people to revisit the policy that we have pertaining to releasing the videos that we're gathering en masse these days. And consistent with the direction that we've been working, we've scheduled a time with the family of Willie James, who was shot in one of our housing projects. We're gonna show to them the video tomorrow that they had asked to see it. And so we're gonna be releasing that video just to the family, for them to see what we have seen. On R28, on Sunday, a question arose about our amendment and restriction on qualifying horizontal expansion. This is on our abatement ordinance. And Martin Thomas had asked what fully integrated meant for the qualification of the horizontal. And the ordinance has been revised and was distributed yesterday, so that the fully integrated is clarified, so that it has to be flush at a butt, and have the same systems as the rest of the building. And so like the vertical integration, there is now no question but that it's part and parcel of the project. The language that is existent today is that it merely adjoin and be a part of the total. And adjoin is defined in a way that it doesn't actually have to physically connect. That on R28, the ordinance that the clerk will be reading, will have that clarification on the meaning of fully integrated.
So, can we talk about that a little bit? So I spoke with the mayor before the meeting, I think others of us had heard some confusion perhaps about this ordinance, and whether if the perimeter of the building was existing, and that would be underneath 51%, whether that would still qualify. I think some of us were questioning that. My understanding is that if we were to pass this ordinance, we would still be able to modify this.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I, I had suggested that we have some wonderful examples from cities like Charleston and Old Town Alexandria, Boston, that have done this, and they've done this well. We don't need to reinvent the egg here. Is that the term?
The wheel.
What are we doing with the egg? Do something.
It comes before the chicken.
The OBTY enhances that.
I just, you know, I, I want us not to be limited here, that we are losing opportunities to maintain and encourage a historic structure, and the mayor's agreed with me on that. So unless others have other concerns on this, if it's okay, we will pass this, but we'll keep this open and maybe have our ARB look at this as a, some opportunities for us to tweak this and encourage that.
Not necessarily, just if we, like you said, if we were being too rigid, or.
Right.
That there was no room for flexibility.
Absolutely. You don't want to lose any opportunities.
Right, yeah.
Right, so if it makes sense, then we can always, what would that be then, a special exception of some kind, or something? Is that what that would be?
That would be one of your options. But right now, it's not.
Oh, yeah, I'm crazy.
Part of the special exception process, but.
Maybe we could name it something else.
Right, that's exactly the type of thing that you might decide to do. But right now, you've just got it as a right or not.
Okay.
Right, that's one of your options.
Ron?
Okay. Our city auditor, John Sanderland, will lead us to the next.
We are at the point in time of the year for our audit, and your audit, we have done each year of our city's financial statements. And we have with us this evening, rather, our external auditors, who's KPMG, Sheryl Zistros is coming to give us an idea of the scope of work that they will be doing, and schedule things that they plan on doing for our audit. So they have been with us, this is actually the third cycle for them with us as the auditors. So she's coming at this time, Sheryl, to carry further in this part.
Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you for the opportunity to continue our relationship with the city. We are starting with the new five-year contract, and we're pleased to have had the opportunity to continue to work with you. And I was very interested to hear the presentation that we heard just a few minutes ago. We do have a team of quite a few of our younger audit and tax folks that are gonna be among the 110 volunteers on Saturday, so glad to be involved in that. So the purpose of our meeting today, we come and see you twice, just because I know we have some new faces at the table this time around. We come and talk to you now, before we get started with the lion's share of our work, and we tell you a little bit about what we're gonna focus on, and, you know, I guess ask if there are any concerns or anything that you think we should be focusing on. And then we'll come back when we complete the process, and we'll have another report on the audit itself and the findings that came out of that. So we'll start with our team, and I guess the good news here is, every person on this page has been on the team in prior audits, so no new folks. That usually makes it a little easier to work through the process if you have some continuity on the team. I serve as the engagement partner for all aspects of the audit of the city of Norfolk, which includes both the city, which we're reporting to you on, as well as Norfolk Public Schools, the Economic Development Authority. And then, you know, most of the folks that work with me, you know, work in different things. Ling, who's here with me today, is kind of our lead senior manager on the city audit. So just to quickly go over what we are going to audit, the first item on the list is, you know, we'll provide an audit opinion on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAFER, which is the big book, you know, with the pictures that have the financial statements for the year, and management's discussion and analysis, and some statistical section. We also will perform a single audit, which for the first time this year will be performed under the uniform guidance, as opposed to A133 that was used in the past of the federal grants. And that audit is done in conjunction with the Norfolk Public Schools and the city as a combined entity. We also perform some procedures on compliance that are required by the auditor of public accounts of the state. We perform some procedures in the sheriff's arena, take a look at canteen funds, and, you know, some of the other processes and controls at the sheriff as prescribed by the APA. We also take a look at the comparative cost report that gets submitted to the state and combined with all the other cities and counties across the state into a statewide report. And we take a look at the census data, which is the information about your employees that participate in VRS, to support the state's audit of the Virginia retirement system. We also perform some procedures on the landfill that are required by the state, and we issue a separate report there. And we issue separate financial statements on the water and wastewater funds that support their revenue bonds, that they issue individually as enterprise funds. And then, of course, you know, we'll provide letters on internal control and compliance, and provide any suggestions that we see along the way. In addition to these, under our overall contract, we do also audit the CAFERS of the schools and the economic. and the Economic Development Authority and issue a V R S census report at the schools. So areas of emphasis, no real changes here. I mean, we obviously focus a lot of attention in an audit on estimates. Some of the key estimates at the city are obviously your pension obligation, which was recorded on the balance sheet for the first time last year and has, you know, a fairly big impact on the net position and how the city's financials look, as well as the post-employment benefits and the self-insurance fund liabilities that go along. In terms of classes of transactions on the other side, I mean, these are, these are the areas where we'll spend more time looking at processes and controls, budget and encumbrances, revenue generation and collection, employee compensation, service delivery and procurement, purchase and acquisition of capital assets, and then debt and treasury. And then, of course, we always spend time in any audit on the control environment, tone at the top, what kind of controls do you have in place to, you know, that sort of provide that upper umbrella that protects all the details underneath. So, in any planning presentation with an audit, we always take a few minutes and talk about fraud. I'm not going to go over this in detail, but this slide summarizes what your responsibilities are as a city and as an organization with respect to fraud. And it primarily revolves around establishing tone and establishing controls. And then what we do, because the purpose of an audit is not really to detect fraud, I mean, the purpose of an audit is to make sure that you don't have any errors in your financial statements. But as part of that, we will try to make sure that we've identified, you know, any areas where there might be risk and, you know, to try to take a look at the controls in those areas. The next couple slides summarize, and we always do this for you, some of the accounting standard changes that are upcoming for both this year and the next couple of years. This, it's, you know, there's been a lot of activity lately, the biggest one being obviously the pension standard that we implemented last year. And you'll see several standards listed on here, and I'm not going to go through them in detail, that are basically fixing the pension standard for lessons learned now that it's been implemented. Probably the big one for this year is when the statements come out, you're going to see, similar to private sector companies, a much more detailed footnote disclosure around your fair value measurements. For the City of Norfolk, the majority of those are actually in the retirement system, which is included. Obviously, we have, you know, a billion-dollar portfolio of investments over there that some are easy to value, some are more difficult to value, and the purpose of that disclosure is to communicate to the readers of the financial statements how risky those valuation decisions are. It is a disclosure model that matches very closely what the private sector does, and that's kind of where governmental accounting is headed, is trying to get a little closer to the private sector. Next year, we will have a tax abatement disclosure where we'll have to provide some information in the financial statements about tax abatement arrangements that you all have entered into, you know, either collectively, like programs, or, you know, individual arrangements that have been made. So, but that one will not come into play until next year.
When you say that, do you mean when we abate real estate taxes or?
Any taxes.
Okay. Or nonprofits and things of that nature?
Probably not for nonprofits. It would be, probably a better example might be like some of the arrangements that were made around like the waterside development or, you know, it's that type of thing. It's providing disclosure where, you know, entities have, you know, received abatements for maybe economic development purposes or other purposes. Yeah. So, and more to come on that one next year as we get closer. I think the process is only just beginning, right Christine, in terms of pulling that together? The next big one is really this one down here for June 30, 2018. And that is the standard that's going to require us to put the post-employment benefit obligation on the books like we did the pensions last year. So, I mean, you all have made some changes to your plan over the last few years that have made your liability much less than it used to be, so it won't have nearly the impact. But that will be another very complex standard that will have to be implemented by your team here in the next few years. So just a few minutes on the single audit. And I guess the message here is this will be the first year that we'll perform the audit under the uniform guidance, which is a new set of rules. The uniform guidance puts a lot more emphasis on internal controls and building strong internal controls within the grantee organizations as opposed to, you know, spending a lot of time having auditors chase transactions. Because obviously you can chase a lot of transactions and not find, you know, issues that are out there. So better to create the prevention up front than try to detect it after the fact. So this list is shorter than it's been in the past, okay? And that was part of, you know, our new contract, looking at the time, where we're looking at six grants this year, where in the past you would have seen us looking at 10, 11, sometimes even 12, under the old standard. So you can see the five that we're looking at this year. And we have an opportunity to reduce the burden on your people and make the process a little bit more efficient by grouping them. So you'll see a lot of them that we're looking at this year are in human services. You know, maybe next year it'll mostly be the schools. We are still doing one program at the schools, which is the Impact Aid. So, and the last bullet, I'm proud to say, there won't be any additional ones. So we have now gotten the June 30 results and this will be a complete list. So our timetable, we've been working since June on planning and looking at internal controls and taking care of a few things. And also, a lot of the single audit grant-type test work is well underway. And our I T folks have also been in the field. We really start hitting the city heavy at the beginning of October and the goal is to issue by November 30 and be back to talk with you in December.
So, does this allow condensing some of the categories? Because last year, my question was, why do we have to keep rolling things over as far as the audit process is concerned? And I see that you're going to be prepared to come back to City Council December of this year?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay, hopefully.
Yeah.
But it looks as though we've categorized things that we're looking for, we're planning in advance so that we won't have to roll, continue to roll things over into the next year. Is that correct?
Yeah. And I think it's, you know, I mean, you all have done a lot to try to build the team, you know, in finance and, you know, controls and processes and whatever to help hopefully be able to get the process finished more quickly, you know, and roll. I mean, we do have 60 days after we issue the report to come and report to you, so it's possible that we might not come until January, but that'll be, you know, I mean, sometimes December schedules are not the best. But the goal is definitely, and I know your team has been working incredibly hard to try to get that November 30, you know, done and accomplished. So, and we're, we would love to do that as well, you know, from our side.
But this doesn't have anything to do with the audit that you may be doing internally?
No.
That may?
That's right.
That may have to roll over because of whatever, whatever, whatever. Okay.
Right. Yep. Completely separate process. So in terms of communications, I mean, we do hold weekly meetings with management as we work through the process and, you know, try to keep folks informed. And we'll be back to you for our second presentation once the process is complete. Any other questions?
Okay, Ron, which next?
Mr. Henneffin with H R S D, and then we'll come back to council interest.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for giving me a little bit of your time to talk about two words that probably aren't put together too often. I think Ron said visionary and sewage. So, you know, I think you'll find this is a fascinating project we've got going in front of us and I hope you take this all in. We're really working across the region to spread this word. So, just a quick background, I haven't been in front of the council, Norfolk Council, and we haven't been here in a long time. And so a quick background on H R S D, you know, we've been at this since 1940 when we were created by Public Referendum, but people have been polluting the bay since John Smith arrived here. And so it's taken us a while to clean it back up, but we're working on it. We are a political subdivision. We are truly a regional entity. Governor appoints our commission, we have eight-member commission, and we have a Norfolk resident, Mike Glenn, who serves on our commission. So there is a Norfolk residency requirement for one member of our commission. They have an independent rate-setting authority, and there is an appeal process through the State Corporation Commission, which up to this point, nobody has really followed through on. We serve 1.6 million people in the region and we treat about 150 million gallons of sewage a day. So it's a, it's a big operation. And we do that so you don't have to. We've got 13 treatment plants and two of those are in the City of Norfolk. We've got one at the Army Base Treatment Plant, which is actually in N I T, totally surrounded by containers. Great neighbors if you're a sewage treatment plant, have containers around you. The other one is at the Virginia Initiative Plant, which is right behind Old Dominion University. So two plants hosted in Norfolk. These are really the main challenges facing our region from a water perspective. I think everyone can agree that cleanup Chesapeake Bay is top priority for everybody in the region. But adaptation to sea level rise is something that you're taking a lead on as a city in the region. And I'll talk about how we might be able to address that somewhat, surprisingly so. Depletion of groundwater resources in all of eastern Virginia, not top of mind for most folks in Southampton Rose, where we rely predominantly on surface water, but a huge issue nonetheless. And you all have a groundwater permit as well as supplemental water source. So what we're really planning to do, this is the bottom line up front, is take the wastewater we currently treat, we highly treat and put into the local waterways, take it all the way to drinking water quality. And that becomes a very valuable resource, so what else could we do with that? At this point, it, we're talking about putting it into the ground to supplement the groundwater. It reduces our discharges to the Chesapeake Bay by 90%. It has the potential to reduce the rate of land subsidence, and I'll show you some points on that. It provides a sustainable source of groundwater for all of eastern Virginia and it provides some protection from groundwater, saltwater contamination. So treating the drinking water is not something new. It's actually done throughout the country, throughout the world. And actually in Virginia, we've got this great reuse project that's been going on since 1978 in northern Virginia, the Alprocaquan Service Authority, where they treat their wastewater, put it in a drinking water reservoir, pull it out and send it on to the Fairfax County customers. About a million people drink that water every day. And I like to point out that they've been pretty successful in northern Virginia from job perspective, housing prices, everything, the education, a lot of positives there. So, you know, drinking that reused water may be a good thing from an interesting perspective. There's a number of places in the country that are moving towards reusing their water. Most of it's indirect, where it goes into some sort of environmental buffer first, and that's exactly what we're talking about. We're not talking about taking wastewater and putting it back into a drinking water system, we're talking about putting it into the ground at that point. Groundwater replenishment's not new either, and it's been done in this region. City of Chesapeake uses a groundwater aquifer storage and recovery system. They've been doing it for a long, long time. Billions of gallons of water have been put in the ground and they pull it back out. So when they have excess water, they put it in the ground as storage, pull it back out when they need it. It must be treated to meet both human drinking standards, so human health quality, and it has to match the groundwater chemistry. So that's been done, we know it can be done, it's been done successfully for a long time. So I'm going to start with a, just a quick overview of these five issues and the restoration of Chesapeake Bay. One of the critical parts is nutrients, and I think everybody's aware that we're working on removing nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment from there. This is just one chart showing what happens to our nitrogen load going into the Chesapeake Bay. And we've got seven treatment plants that actually discharge into the James River, and we've got a total amount of nitrogen we can discharge there. And that stair steps down, back in 2006, Virginia was ahead of the game and passed a wasteload allocation bill to reduce nitrogen going into the bay, and that's that top gray line. And we were given an allocation of 6 million pounds a year. Before we could even get to that compliance point, we had five years to make that, 2011, the Chesapeake Bay TMDL was put into effect in 2010. It had new limits for us, stepped in at 2017 and '22, so the red line is now our target. So we hadn't finished building what we needed to to get to the 6 million pounds and the game already changed to 3.4 million. To get from the gray line to the red line has cost almost $500 million in improvements to our treatment plants. They were never designed to remove nutrients, no one was thinking in those terms in those days. The scary part is EPA has told the region that if agriculture and stormwater don't get to their points, they're going to come back on the point sources, that's the wastewater treatment plants, and take us down to about 1.6 million pounds. The cost to get from the red to the yellow is about three-quarters of a billion because we've done the easy stuff up front. The easy half a billion's been spent. Another three-quarters of a billion would be what it takes to get to the 1.6. What we're proposing, by taking our water, treating it, drinking water and putting it in the ground, we'll be down in the 500,000 pound range. So we will significantly reduce our discharge to the Chesapeake Bay. And this is one example. It's the same with phosphorus and sediment. So the chart looks like this, and the key for you is stormwater needs. So all the localities that have stormwater permits, and you're one of the six with your own M S four permits, but all the smaller localities fall under a general permit, are under a requirement to reduce your nitrogen, phosphorus and sediment discharge to Chesapeake Bay. You're going to do that in three permit cycles, and you're in your first permit cycle now, you have to reduce 5%. In total, the James River for the region has to reduce about 65,000 pounds in nitrogen, about 20,000 pounds, 13,000 pounds of phosphorus. We're going to free up almost 3 million pounds of nitrogen and almost 250 million pounds of phosphorus, meaning that we can trade so that you don't have to do the retrofit projects if we do our project. So the region itself saves a lot of money from not having to do stormwater retrofit projects. We've worked with D E Q on this, we think this is a very viable solution, and we'll be working with your staff to try to figure out how to make that come about. Adaptation to sea level rise, like I said, you're on the lead on this. You're well aware that land sinking, so sea level rise is a combination of land sinking, sea rising. In our area, U S G S estimates that up to 50% of the sea level rise is due to land sinking, and 50% of that land sinking is due to the aquifer compaction. So as we're pulling water out of the aquifer in eastern Virginia, we're actually creating enough reduced pressure to allow the ground to settle. And so we've actually got some evidence that this is the case. U S G S has two monitoring points, that's all they've got to measure subsidence. And these are what they call extensometers. They drill a well hole all the way to bedrock. They put a steel rod, basically, that goes from this point all the way down 2,000 feet to bedrock. And then they measure the, this piece sinks or rises on the ground surface, and you can tell the difference of ground elevation to bedrock and understand how much we're sinking. They actually ran out of funding to monitor these in the late 1990s. They took a photo of the one in Franklin area in 2002, and when it's perfectly level, like the yellow line shows there, that was how it was set in 2002. They came back in 2015 and it was at this angle. And, you know, my immediate reaction when I saw the picture is, wow, we really are sinking. That was a rise of 32 millimeters over that period of time. And the reason was the I P, the International Paper Franklin Paper Mill, quit withdrawing the large amount of water in about 2009 timeframe. They shut down for about two years. They've come back online at a significant reduction of withdrawal. And so we've actually seen a rebound of ground elevation in that area. So that holds some promise that if we add water back in and at least neutralize the amount of water that's being withdrawn by putting water back, that we could slow down, reduce, or maybe even get a little bit of rebound out of that. The depletion of groundwater resources, it's happened fast in our region. So we're on top of a great aquifer, but it's a pressurized body of water, basically. It sits about, top of it's about 500 feet below us. And back at the turn of the century, if you stuck a pipe in the ground, you didn't need a pump, you needed a valve because the water would rise about 31 feet above sea level, straight out. So it's Artesian-type well. As early as the turn of the century, this 1920 photo from the U S G S shows that farmer at this point in '27 was having water rise to that level. By '37, it was already down there. So as we've been hitting that aquifer over time, we've been reducing the pressure and the water doesn't rise. Today, the water only rises to about 100 feet below where it was at that point in time. So we've lost about 100 feet of pressure in that 100 years. What's that going to do over time? So we've got a lot of folks withdrawing water throughout eastern Virginia, about 150 million gallons a day are permitted. And if we keep doing that, the chart on the left, the red colors are negative pressures. And so the dark reds and orange colors are negative pressure showing about a 200 feet loss in pressure in the areas around. And you see those two centers are basically where the two paper mills are, one in West Point, one in Franklin. And taking that same run, so that's a 50-year model of current withdrawals over that 50-year period of time, damaging the aquifer. Do the same thing, but we. period of time, damaging the aquifer, do the same thing, but we take our water, add our treatment plants, treat it to drinking water, put it in the ground. We suddenly get positive pressures over that same period. And actually, just by looking at the colors, the blues and greens are very good colors to have in this map. And we see positive results as far north into Maryland and well south into North Carolina if you had a whole aquifer. So, it's just basically a large pressurized balloon, and we're adding pressure to it at one, seven locations, actually, of our treatment plants. And then, finally, wet weather sewer overflows. I think you're aware that we're under consent decree to reduce overflows for the region. We've been working on that with all the localities in the region for some time. It's really about this point here. The amount of flow that comes to our plants is the blue line. The amount that goes through the water meters in the region's the green line. The difference is groundwater and rainwater gets into our system on any given day. We're looking to eliminate that. But we're actually finding some success in helping the water quality by doing a more focused effort to look for areas where bacteria shows up in the water. And we've had a lot of success working in coordination with Norfolk, both utilities and public works, to track those down in the Lafayette River. And we've got a group that's working on that to continue that efforts across the region as best we can. And we're actually finding that that's a more effective way to reduce bacteria impairments than just dealing with the overflows. We're going to continue to deal with the overflows, but that's a long-term project. So, really, the conclusion, the benefits, really, reducing the discharges Chesapeake Bay is huge, provides that opportunity to offset the stormwater work that you would have to do, potentially reducing that rate of land subsidence, solving the groundwater issue for the eastern Virginia area and protection from saltwater. Total project cost is about $1 billion. Seems high, and it is. We've got a $4.4 billion CIP over the next 20 years, and a good portion of that is that wet weather consent decree work. So, our proposal, really back to DEQ and EPA, has been, let's delay that, do this work first, and then we'll come back and do the wet weather work we need to afterwards. If we do that, we can fit this into our CIP without having to change our plans. So, why now? We owe the EPA a plan in 2017. Once they approve that plan, if we don't have this integrated, we'll pretty much lose that financial ability to attack this problem for the next 20, 25 years because we'll have to do the work that we agree to with EPA. So, this is a window of opportunity to try to get this integrated in there. The Bay TMDL deadline's 2025, and the only way we can get that done is if we start now, and the groundwater scarcity continues to be a problem. So, the timeline, we continue to work on some study to modeling to really show that, are we going to succeed in reducing or slowing down sea level rise? We'll be doing some modeling to make that happen. We're doing a demonstration project now, can we treat water to meet drinking water quality? And we plan, that's actually happening right now at our York River Treatment Plant. We're going to have a September 15 event where we're going to be drinking that water. And it's quite exciting from our perspective, but maybe not from everybody's. But it will be meeting drinking water standard. We'll have a demonstration project run in 2018 for a year where we'll actually be putting a million gallons a day into the ground, be understanding how fast it moves and what impact it has on groundwater or land subsidence at that point. In an ideal world, we'll have permits to build in 2020, build through 2030, and be fully operational with about 100 million gallons a day going into the ground in the 2030 timeframe. So, we're making the news. We try to keep it out in front of folks. And again, briefings like this are just to really give you a heads up. We'll be coming to you at some point for an endorsement of this project, but we aren't looking for anything else from the city at that point. And obviously, some cooperative work on the stormwater piece, which we think benefits everybody in the region. And that's all I've got, sir.
Thank you very much, Ron.
May I ask a couple of questions? How much is this going to cost our customers?
So, it's already built into our rate forecast if we are able to slide the other work we were planning to do out. So, it's a tough question to answer. So, we've already got a $4 billion CIP in our rate plan. And so, this will just, instead of the first billion dollars that we were going to do on wet weather work, we're going to push that out. So, our rates are going to continue to rise, but they rise whether we do this project or whether we do that project.
You know, the water bills in Norfolk, just for paying for water, it's good. But by the time you put stormwater on refuse collection, and then when we get your bill, it makes it, you know, sort of sometimes you're not able to digest it. One of the things I've always wanted to know, and maybe you can answer this question for me now, because I can't seem to get an answer from my utility people, and it might not even be, when HRSD tags a water customer for pass-through accounts, do you share that money with Norfolk, or do you just keep it all?
No, so it's a cooperative after. We're billing agent for you and for our charges. So, when we tag someone or cut them off and they make payment, it goes proportionally back to Norfolk for the portion of the bill that's theirs and to HRSD for the portion of bills that's ours.
You know, I've been sitting around here before Norfolk joined the unified billing system. And when we voted on it, the vote was 6 to 1, and I voted against it because I just, you know, believed that we eliminated a lot of jobs in Norfolk that we could have kept. And I guess I'm probably one of the most suspect members around this table of Hanford Road Sanitation District. I had a couple of questions. So, the benefit to us would be what?
The benefit would be predominantly from a perspective of stormwater investment, that the retrofits you would have to make on stormwater to meet the requirements to reduce your nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment, you would not have to make. Ideally, you could put that work into, that money into other recurrent flooding work and other things you're doing for sea level rise adaptation and do things that are discretionary to your council as opposed to mandated by EPA. That's the benefit on the stormwater side. The other benefit is if we're successful in reducing the rate at which sea level rise is impacting, we buy a lot of time for the region, and Norfolk is obviously very focused on that. So, if we can reduce the rate at which sea level rise is impacting the region by 25%, that's probably the only thing we can do in our lifetime to make a difference today.
Has Hampton Road Sanitation ever thought about desalinization, or is that cost prohibitive?
It's very, very costly. To put it in perspective, saltwater, seawater has about 35,000 parts per million salt. And it takes high pressures through a reverse osmosis membrane, and you only get about 65% pure water. And then, you get a very concentrated stream of brine that has to be treated and disposed of at the same time. So, it becomes energy-intensive and very expensive to run. In fact, our project, we're monitoring or we're modeling and using in the pilot a reverse osmosis, the same system you would use for saltwater. But instead of 200 to 250 pounds of pressure to push it through the membranes, wastewater is much easier to push through membranes. It takes maybe 80 pounds of pressure, so much less energy to do that. We still don't think this project works if we have to do reverse osmosis for all of it. We're using a carbon-based process in parallel to the reverse osmosis, which doesn't, is not energy-intensive and treats 100% of the water, and it's a much better solution from an environmental perspective. So, we're measuring to see if we can get the same water quality out of that. It's been done elsewhere in the world. We are getting the same water quality right now, so we're hopeful that that will be the solution we use.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Have HRSD considered doing, going to online billing?
We have online billing available.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, I've had people who've called, and they're like, I can't get my bill online. Maybe you guys could streamline that to be a little bit more user-friendly, kind of like just a simple opt-in, like you can with Virginia Power, Virginia Natural Gas. And then, the other thing, too, is I've also had folks call if they've gotten the little tags that they're going to be disconnected. There may also be a more efficient way because there's an additional fee when you guys have to come out and put the little tag on the door. So, there may be something more efficient that we can do other than having people ride around town and put tags on doors, just to kind of maybe bring some of those costs down for the, you know, for the consumer. Because that's a lot of gas and tires and wear into our vehicles and stuff.
Ted, I assume you have a lot of options where if you're going to do this, where you could infuse the water, or whatever that's called when you return it. Have you looked at where we could maximize the amelioration against land subsidence by infusion? Have you looked at that?
Not yet. That's a great, right now, moving water is very expensive. And so, the concept we're proposing is really putting in the ground at the plant location. So, from Norfolk's perspective, there's a benefit in the fact that there's two plants here, one in Old Dominion and one in NIT. And theoretically, we'd be putting, if this all goes forward, we'd be putting all that water in the ground at those locations. So, a little closer to Norfolk, we aren't sure how fast you see, how wide and how fast you see those benefits. And that's part of the next phase of our study is to try to understand that. But it's a great question. Just a minute.
You know, with the Chesapeake Bay building that was built out and where they are totally neutral, so they must have their own individual system essentially, am I correct?
Yeah.
On how they use their wastewater and reuse it.
Just a minute. They don't reuse their wastewater. They use composting toilets, and then they actually do have a liquid stream that ultimately has to come off of that, and they, we haul that to one of our treatment plants where...
So, is that available to individuals in our city? I mean, if somebody decided they wanted to build a home and do that...
Self-composting toilets?
Yes, well, the whole thing.
Composting toilets are, I mean, they're, I think the only place locally that has them in homes, there's a group of homes in the city of Bicoson. They built to be almost zero environmental. I believe they've got composting toilets, but there aren't very many. It's a pretty complicated process to put those in your house.
And should it become less complicated as the technology grows? Is there any trend for that?
There isn't really a trend. I think, you know, as an industry, what needs to happen is we need to deal with it at the source and quit moving it long distances. And so, you're right in the area that I think there needs to be a lot of focus in transformational research. I can tell you, it's not happening. There are folks, Gates Foundation is really focused on that from a third-world perspective. But we need to be focused on in the United States to find a better way to treat our waste without having to use clean water to move it through pipes, you know, many, many miles to large treatment plants that are all very inefficient. And I'm saying that as someone, that's my living, and I don't think that's the right way.
Well, especially when you think about a place like Flint and things, and now the infrastructure costs, are we going in the wrong direction? Or instead of trying to improve that, should we be going to, you know, something that we as a city or state should incentivize? I was just curious how far the industry is going.
It's a great observation. But they are, the industry's not moving very fast in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, moving to council concerns, I'll start with Mr. Riddick.
Yeah, I had spoken to Laura earlier today. She's not here now, is she?
Not here.
Okay. Did you get the Trilo phone?
Yes, sir, it's online. And I sent it to Mr. Ramstein.
Okay. I mean, well, it won't be up here today.
No, sir, not yet, but I'll let you know.
Okay, yeah. What it is, I'd like to indulge you for a couple of minutes, and I thought we had a video, but a native of Norfolk whose name is Nate Parker is having a world premiere of his movie Birth of a Nation here in Norfolk on September 27. And he was at the Addicts Theater a couple of months ago, and he has convinced Fox Searchlight to have this world premiere here in Norfolk. He let them know there are other places other than New York and Los Angeles to have a world premiere. And this film could possibly be nominated for an Academy Award. And when he was here, John Ramstein and others, he came to the Addicts Theater and made a presentation, saying that he was going to go back to Fox and see if they could have the world premiere here. This film won the Sundance Film Festival, and this is when Fox paid him $17.5 million for the rights to this movie. He's a Norfolk native from Tyawooda Pond and has done well.
Nate Parker.
Nate Parker. And the premiere is going to be at the MacArthur Center Cinema on the 27th of September.
What time?
I don't know. I think it's in the evening. And so, I don't know. That's a council meeting night, so maybe you and I be the ones that go.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting.
We're going to have a meeting that day.
So, wait a minute.
The 27th?
No, the meeting that, we had a tentative, tentative joint meeting with the school board, but we can change the time.
Okay.
It was just a tentative meeting, but we can, with the school board.
Okay, great.
But we can work with that.
Okay, great, great. Secondly, in our legislative package, which I know is several months away, I would like to propose decriminalization of small amounts of marijuana. I'm making...
Decriminalization or the decriminalization?
Decriminalization. Decriminalization. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Turner. The decriminalization of the possession of small amounts of marijuana. And I'm not suggesting legalization in any form, but decriminalization. The reason I'm making this request so early is because I would like for a presentation to be made to the entire council on such a measure. I first got the idea from former Mayor Daley of Chicago, who believed that his police department, his police officers were taken off of the streets too many times going to court with people for a small amount of marijuana, maybe five or six times before they actually had a trial. And his effort was to free up the police officers. And what I would like to find out, I'd like to have a presentation by professionals to let us know their opinion, whether it's the courts, police department, legal scholars who know the impact of a conviction of small amounts of marijuana. And I want this to be a joint effort on the part of the council, because if it's not, if we don't have a council majority, then I don't think there would be any reason to try to find a patron of this. And that's why I'd like to see a total presentation to find out what impact it has on the lives of a young person who might get caught with a small amount of marijuana, as opposed to just giving them a ticket and a fine. And so, Ron, I'd like for us to have this presentation in time for the legislative package. And as I say, I want the opinion of the entire council. This is not something I'm trying to push, you know, on my own. I think we need the consensus of this council before something like this goes to the legislative package.
And Mr. Riddick...
Sorry.
Mr. Riddick, there was a documentation on television of interest with marijuana and how many people receive very high sentencing for marijuana, depending on the location, what the practice is as far as locality and state, also in comparison with the hardcore drugs. And it was really interesting for people, especially the younger generation, to receive such high sentencing for marijuana versus heroin and cocaine, just the small amounts. And it does have an impact on what the location is and what is the practice of the locality and the state level and federal.
Paul, it's interesting you brought that up because this past weekend, I'm on the executive board for VML, and I'm the urban section chair. And at our annual conference, which is in Virginia Beach, we picked one topic to cover. Urban section always has the most controversial topics. Last one, last time it was gun rights. I asked for the decriminalization of marijuana and also medical use of marijuana to be the topic at the VML, which will include all of the urban localities and anybody else who wants to be part of that. And we think it's going to be so big, they're going to put us in the biggest room. So, if you haven't signed up for VML, it's October 10, it's in Virginia Beach, so it's right around in our neighbors. And so, just interesting you brought that up because I specifically asked for that topic to be talked about. And I think we have an opportunity there because those who've been involved in VML, we've been working with our colleagues and other councils. And so, if we can get a Virginia Beach Republican delegate to carry that type of legislation, has a better chance of passing in the legislature, legislation, you know, as we go forward. But it would be, they're going to, VML is going to find all of the state experts to come down to do that presentation to that group, and I'll be facilitating that conversation.
Is that going to be recorded, Tom, or do you know?
I don't know. We can ask them about recording. They normally don't, but we can ask them to record that. And that will be in October, so that will be before we even have that. Yeah.
Okay, that's great. All right, Dr. Wiggly. All right, Dr. Wiggly.
Nicole and I went to the Vision 2100 meeting on Thursday and I really would like to applaud all the work, this has been a long and extensive program. It really was a, very encouraging to see the participation by so many of our citizens and I absolutely applaud the fact that we're tackling this and as Bob Badger said, we're not doing it for our kids, we're doing it for our grandchildren. That being said, there is, and I know this is kind of first blush, but there is some language in here that I find difficult for some of our citizens and some of our businesses to live with, I guess, and I don't think the newspaper article did us any favors because it definitely kind of slanted us toward it sounded like we were all pulling up stakes and moving to military circle within the next five years. But that being said, there were definitely people and stakeholders there that were concerned about some of the language in this. And so, I'm saying this only that I applaud your good work, but I hope we're going to be continuing to work on this and fine tune some of the ways we are stating this so it doesn't sound like we are discouraging economic development in the, I think, the red zones and not going to do any infrastructure work in the red zones and the housing areas as you could maybe interpret from some of this language. So, I guess I'm asking that we as a community and all of us work together on fine tuning this to continue the strong work.
Mr. Smigle.
Okay, in between Bayview Boulevard and Fisherman's Road, there's a little section of a neighborhood and I was just back there the other day driving around because some residents had complained about the condition of the roads. The alligator cracking and the potholes that are in that whole section, there's grass growing out of cracks, I don't know if this got left off of a surfacing plan or, I don't know what's happening over there, but if we could look at it, it's Wayland, Devon Street, Carlton and Hammond. I know there's been some resurfacing-
Hello there, Terry. I didn't do anything, I promise.
We're gonna revoke your privileges on that thing.
Terry, do you need more time?
I think so, Terry. Somebody wants to talk, doesn't he?
If we can look at that, I know that, we were sent maps of next year's resurfacing, but I know that, are we, I don't know where we're going with this, but I know Councilman Riddick brought this, we've had some rough weather the last couple of years that I think have really hit our streets a lot harder, which is why we're seeing more potholes, but I'm wondering if, what kind of audit or what can be done to really look at the big picture of our roads. I hate to admit this publicly on camera, but I've been doing a lot of Pokemon hunting with my family, so I've got, I've had the opportunity to go up and down a lot of streets in Norfolk that we normally wouldn't have gone down and I, I'm, there's a lot of issues and I know we're doing a lot of pothole repair, but we've gotta figure out what's going on with this and it's not just major roads, it's now within the neighborhood roads. There's one road down in Willoughby, I think it's the very end, it looks like it hasn't been resurfaced in like forty years, the condition of it, I mean it's been patched up over and over and over and people are driving over that, so I'm hoping that we can, I know it's a money thing and I joke that I think Marcus stopped spending money on roads so that we can get money for other things, but we've gotta figure out what's going on there and start addressing this.
Wasn't state funding drastically reduced on this, Ron?
Yeah.
Because I know when we brought it up at budget time.
Yes.
So maybe that should be a legislative package.
Yeah, or maybe we need to start activating our citizens to call their state legislators and complaining to them about this. Lights are completely out, all of the lights are out at Sarah Constant Beach Park and they've been out for about a month and a half. So, and these are poles, Dominion Power poles, all through from this thin section all the way through where the shrine is. Talking about street lights, just, maybe we can get a small presentation and a better understanding of how this relationship works with Dominion Power. So if a pole gets reported, Dominion Power has a certain amount of time to come out and check out the issue, they flag it, they don't have to repair it then, they flag it, they put a marker on it and then they have a certain amount of time to repair it and if they don't repair it in that time, then the city gets a refund on their electric bill, I guess. So they could technically leave a light unrepaired for a long time and then we get a credit or something back, that was my understanding years ago when I brought this up. So I'm just curious to see how this is working. I know there's a lot of new lights that have been added on, Dominion's done some of that, which is great, more efficient lights, but there are so many lights out in the city now that I don't know if Dominion can keep up with it. And I see a lot of poles where the light will get fixed and it will be out, you know, a year later. And I don't know if it's a temporary repair or what kind of bulbs they're using, but I'd just like to figure out this bigger picture of what's happening, do we need to start reducing some lights too so that we can add new lights in places that need them or look at, it just bothers me to see how many lights are out in our city and what we're paying for and if we're getting that refund back at the rate that Dominion, that we're supposed to, is it a hundred and twenty dollars a light or something, is that what I?
Along those lines, in addition to the financial element, I've had a lot of concerns come up with regards to public safety.
Right.
And the lights being out, I know in the Ghent area, there are a lot of lights that are out and at the same time, there are a lot of cars that are being broken into. And so, people are very concerned that there, you know, some get automatically updated and fixed quickly, others do not. I will say that Norfolk Cares has been great, when I've boarded it on to them, there's been a constant stream of interaction and communication and sometimes it gets fixed and sometimes it doesn't, but that's a Dominion Power thing, so, but people are really concerned from a public safety issue, we need to get Norfolk lit.
So we had Dominion Power come out and speak to the Ghent Task Force because we identified so many lights that are out just in that one area. And one of my frustrations is they kind of ignore their responsibility to notify citizens that this is not really a Norfolk Cares issue, this is a Dominion Power issue and they're supposed to, you know, be the ones that are notified and I suggested to them putting it out in their bills, you know, doing ads, doing all kinds of public service things that they could do to help us understand who's really in charge of the lights. And I'll have to admit, I didn't get much of a response. I mean, I may have been slaying the messenger, you know, this guy may not have been the one that makes those decisions, but it's pretty frustrating and it's just like Andrea says, it's all over our city. They apparently identify them according to whether it's a home or a repair and that has to figure in with how quickly obviously it's done, but we're not getting the response we need and when you start looking at some of the monies being made by Dominion Power statewide, it's pretty frustrating.
Is it possible for us to look at in the future moving our lights to LED all across the city? I mean, I know that's more, that's many, but it's money upfront, but maybe perhaps less headache for residents on the backside?
I think we end up paying for-
Ironically, the maintenance overhead for the LED is more expensive than the others, that's for their new rate structure for the LEDs, ironically. But we can include some overview in that when we give you an overview on lights.
But who can we talk to about this? I mean, who, who has the ear of Dominion Power to understand our frustrations, citywide?
And bring them here.
Yeah.
This is another legislative issue? Obviously should be.
We're in a consortium that I think is VML, so all of the localities negotiate the agreement that's governing these terms with us and Virginia Power in one large agreement, that bargaining power. And I think that VML has selected Kristen Barton as their rate utility lawyer to help them with that and that contract is multi-year, maybe as long as five years at a time, but it's probably the primary governing terms for our relationship with Dominion Power that we're doing with all of the localities.
Anyway, just to end this, you know, it obviously is important for everybody, I don't know if it's a topic for the retreat, but, you know, it just, it does disappoint me, I know of lights that I've reported that need to be fixed and they've been tagged to be fixed and they're still out. I mean, we're talking three or four years later. Whether or not the city got credit for it, I don't know specifically, but I've seen them mark poles and not repair them. And it's not an attack on Dominion, I know it's a big system and it's, we just have to figure out a way to get this done faster in identifying those. My final topic is the animal care center. I know that animal issues are always controversial on council, but this council has requested, a few council members have requested over the years that we look at a plan to build a new animal care center or find another location that can handle more animals or a bigger location and it doesn't ever appear in the budget, even planning money to look at a design for this. They, I know some, I think Councilwoman Colleen, you visited recently and the, what they have done with that location is great, you know, for the small amount of space, but other cities have built new centers in the last couple of years and we just continue to fall behind. I know animals are not always the priority over education and other issues in here, but at some point, we've gotta get a plan for this and get it on there, whether it happens in seven or eight years, we've gotta figure out where we're gonna go and where we would build this or put a new facility if we were to have it.
And comparison- I mean, parts of it bring in trailers for kids, why can't we do that temporarily?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, really, you know, as a stopgap, I agree with what you're saying.
And I know we just took animals from Louisiana and there's some controversy about that, but, you know, we, it would be great to look at a future plan for that.
And Tommy, in comparison to other cities, we are way behind. They've built some wonderful animal care centers in the other states.
But I would suggest that the actual center itself is not the metric we should be looking at.
Right.
We should be looking at our save rate of our animals and I think that's-
That's true.
I think that if we perhaps looked at some ways others are doing this, it is, it's a very controversial issue and, but I think that there are opportunities to take a look at what other shelters are doing around the state in terms of how we deal with feral cats, for example, or don't deal with feral cats, we could talk about that, that might be a retreat topic, but so I would, I-
I would say no one.
That's a committee topic.
Same rates could also go up too because I think we euthanize animals in ours faster because we don't have the space-
Right.
-to hold them longer, so.
And that's one of the most important things if you're trying to push toward an oil kill, you need a lot more space.
And a couple of agencies have joined together in suggestion to what you're saying to follow up on the plan.
Well, we get lots of emails.
All right, Mrs. Graves.
I have a couple of things. I'd like to get an update on the tobacco building thing on Virginia Beach, on Princess Anne Road, whatever is going on with that, I know we have some legal issues with them and I'm understanding that we're opening up another lane of highway, but what's going on with the building, the last one we had, there were some court dates and things like that, so that's probably a closed session issue, but I'd like to know where we are with that. And then, I just want to give a real shout out, commendation or whatever, to everybody who's worked the summer events for, from the staff. I mean, it's been nights, it's been weekends, it's been overtime, triple time, whatever time it is, but they have been at three and four different events, you know, on a Saturday or, you know, during the week with civic leagues and all that kind of stuff and it's been really hot. And so, I just wanted to commend the staff for the extra time that they have put in and it's been very, it's been well received by the community for all the reunions and things of that nature. The last thing is, I would like for us to find a way, we have some reunions that are like staple reunions, they happen every year and there are some policies with special events where you have to register by this time for this and that time for the other and all that kind of stuff. But to me, if a organization has a history of an event, then maybe there could be some concession for them in terms of giving them the opportunity to not have to go through, not, not less insurance or less whatever, but maybe in, okay, we know we have, like, we have, what's the one in your community, Tommy, on the Green Day, what's the Green Day? St. Patrick's Day, okay, so you know we have the-
Green Day.
I couldn't think.
The Green Day.
The St. Patrick's Day Parade, we know we have the Hart Place reunion, we know we have the Berkeley reunion, we know we have the Ingleside Fest, you know, we know we have those and those, those events happen every year and there are certain things that they come to reserve, like the Showmobile and, you know, all of that every year. I don't think that they should jump through hoops every year or be denied because we rented something out to a one-time pop-up event or something, you know, when these are staple community events that happen year in and year out. So I think there should be some kind of consideration made for those annual events that we have every year by our special events people. But aside from that, kudos to everybody who has been out in the hot sun all summer long, we appreciate it.
Okay. So, last Wednesday, I've really been pushing for that we have all of these jobs that are gonna be available in the city of Norfolk, but somehow we need to close the gap in having these jobs available for the citizens here in Norfolk and how do we get to a point to prepare them to get the job? So I'm still waiting on a report on what our plan is so that we can prepare our citizens to get the jobs. We work very hard to bring the jobs here to the city of Norfolk and there are people who are waiting for us, once again, for guidance to say, hey, when are the jobs available for us to go fill out applications or whatever? And I know that Team Norfolk is waiting on that, but my, my concern is time is moving really fast. Many of the job opportunities that we've been talking about, they're gonna be finished by next spring, early summertime, so the people need to know. With that, last Wednesday I had the opportunity to visit Fortis College and they are waiting for us, they're ready. These young adults, citizens in general, they are being prepared at Fortis College and they're waiting for the job opportunities. So we have to provide the green light to say it's a go. Today I had a chance to visit Tidewater Tech and in my tour at Tidewater Tech, it was something phenomenal, something that I had not seen before, to really see them do the job that we're talking about, providing our citizens other opportunities for jobs. I am encouraging that we as a city council take time out to visit Fortis College and Tidewater Tech to actually see what they're doing for our young adults. Tidewater Tech addresses the issues with veterans, they are training veterans, they're training people who may be ex-offenders and they're training ordinary citizens in various areas that we can provide them jobs for our upcoming job opportunities. So if there's anyone interested, again, to go visit Fortis College and Tidewater Tech, I would say go. The other thing is flooding at the ramp at the, I think it's 264 Valentine, it really floods bad once you go through the light under the underpass to get on the ramp. Very dangerous even with good tires, once the water is a certain level, there's a great potential that your tire will hit and bounce back. A couple of weeks ago, since I was tasked at being at Coleman Place Elementary and Coleman Place Elementary has two retention ponds, I think, there and you would not have believed that there wasn't anything there because the flooding at Coleman Place Elementary School hindered us from leaving the school, it was almost as though you're trapped. We could not get out, we actually had to wait a couple of hours. Very thankful that it didn't rain before the children left, the bus could leave, but as far as the faculty and staff at Coleman Place, when they get, when we get strong downpours, they are actually trapped at the school because they have no way of being able to get out and we have two ponds there, from my understanding.
And they were not full, the ponds?
Oh, they, Terry, there was so much water that the water was actually over the tires to a truck.
But over the ponds too.
Yeah, to the truck. So maybe, well, we need to look at that. And the other thing is if our police officers could slow down a little bit when they're driving in the community to whatever they're doing, just slow down enough so that people can wave to them. Some people want to wave, they're very thankful that the officers are in the community and they just wanna say thank you, but when they're going through- But when they're going through the community, they're very fast. So if we could make that community connection to possibly slow down. As far as what Tommy and most of us were discussing about the lighting situation from Virginia Beach Boulevard to Corporal Avenue leading up to Norfolk State University, there are a lot of lights out. I was very impressed with the constituent in the Estabrook community who sent a report with approximately 15 pole numbers. He took the time to actually identify all of the poles that did not have lighting with the numbers. So it was very helpful to Norfolk Cares, however, many of us can't do that. So we'll have to figure out what we're going to do with the lighting situation.
And can I add to your police officers slowing down? Those in city vehicles need to slow down too, when they're in neighborhoods and stay off the cell phones.
I've got two items. Number one, you might have heard, there's a new pilot bike loop that's happening again. And I've gotten lots of commentary about that, a lot of positives, some of us wondering why we have bike paths, et cetera. And I would just encourage the city to create a communications plan to help educate our cyclists on how to use the bike paths. Make sure that we're working with our school systems so that kids know how to use them. And also work with our motor vehicles on how they should be respectful and working with them too. So it's great to have the bike paths, but if people don't know how to utilize them, it's a problem, so.
Have to do a shout out that also includes Heart Place, not just Ghent.
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, absolutely, absolutely does. And.
Signage is going up?
Signage is going up. They're doing, yeah, yeah. So there's that.
And wake up the SAs, et cetera, going out.
One second item.
I have a second item. I just wanted to share with you, we took a little field trip this morning, my kids and I did. And I wanted to show you something I see every day for the last two months. And this is, if anybody could recognize what that building is.
Waterside.
That's Waterside with the big hole, gaping hole, that's been there for two months with nobody inside doing anything. And I was hoping we could get a status update on that. The other thing I wanted to share with you was this brochure that I received from the Cordish Group that has the residential tower in it next to Waterside. And a schematic that shows a residential phase two in here along with the majority of the second floor being used for office space. So I'm concerned about this. And I'm curious who in the development department is tracking this and how that works. I did some research from Cordish. I went to their website about the Waterside District and there's nothing on there other than contact for leasing. I did take a look at the contract from October 2013 as well as the amendment from 2016. And I have some real concerns there too with regard to the residential tower, which I've been assured can't happen. And I've been telling folks that. There is section 2.7 that says an expansion of project could happen, including a residential tower, if reasonably agreed to between NRHA and the LSE. So I want to make sure that's not the case and that should, needs to come through city council first. Also, from a performance standpoint, the original agreement was signed almost three years ago. And this is supposed to be open in April 2017. This is what it looks like. If anybody's done a renovation project in their house, the easiest part is the demolition. They've done that, but it's open. This is a big part of Norfolk in the exciting part of 2017. I don't see anything happening and it scares me. And I'd really like to know what's happening here.
Plus, they were supposed to give us updates on who the final leases were. We've heard little bits and pieces, but we haven't heard. Now, they did talk to us when they came around and met with all of us in the spring about the Spark area up on the third, second floor. But Marcus had told me recently that that had been pared down and that wasn't going to be as big as it was, was that what you all had heard or?
Well, I remember when we had the conversation. I met with them, but I remember the conversation that we had about the apartments. And that was something that we.
Said no?
Yeah, we totally did not agree to. And that if there was such a thing, that it did have to come back through the council.
So that was true.
That's, that's, that's correct. Andrea has pointed out that the lessor is the NRHA. But the lessor has committed to us, NRHA has committed to us. They will not approve apartments unless this council is approving of apartments.
And do we have that in writing?
From the NRHA?
Yeah.
We don't, but they'd be happy to, without a writing.
Wouldn't they have to put, wouldn't that be a zoning change that they would have to bring to us for multifamily if they even, if they did that?
Well, that's what we have been promised all along. And I'm sorry Marcus isn't here, but we have been promised that all along, that nothing could happen unless we agreed to it. And I told the Cordish gentleman that, we met with them last spring.
Ron, who is our, our point person for the city on that project, who is making sure that they're staying on top of?
Chuggery.
Okay. So we can get an update.
What do we have?
I believe that's a dating brochure as well, before the council had that discussion.
I received, I received this on June 1st.
We, they brought that last year when they came down here and met with everybody. And, I mean, that was after we, that was still after we told them that we were not going, that we didn't want, you know.
Why don't, why don't I have Peter to put this on the retreat agenda?
Good.
Just flush it out.
Well, I would actually like to hear about it sooner than that, at least by email. I know we don't meet again, right? We don't meet before the September. Oh, yeah, right. But I, I would like to have something, I mean, you can just shoot us an email as far as.
An update. And then make it like bulleted, so that it's not five or six or seven or eight paragraphs to tell us what's going on in very simple, you know.
And my, and my, my concern is what are the performance standards by which they have to operate?
We got it. So let's, let's let, give staff orders a chance to, okay? Nicole.
Sure. Word one, I've had some complaints about drugs and possible human trafficking issues in Ward 1. They are having a hard time following up with issues, like they think they submitted a report with vice and drugs. And then they call back and they can't find the record. They don't, they aren't given a case number. I did talk to Captain Toren about this quite a bit, but I still seem to be a bit sketchy on how the calls come in, if they're calling the right number, what happens when they call mine one? Does it get routed to the right place? There's no real tracking number that the resident receives to add more information. Granted, they're not going to necessarily get feedback on the case. There just seemed to be a lot of confusion around this for our residents in reporting and, you know, just making sure that there's due diligence is being addressed. But when they call back and they find out nobody can find the record, there's a lot of concern.
And that's with all reports, Nicole, well, many reports, Nicole, that the citizens no longer want to report because there's no follow-up. I don't care what it is, if their cars were broken into, they're not getting a report on the update.
In addition, so, and Captain Toren also told me, told me that one of the main point of contact for civic leagues is their officer that comes to see them. Their CRO. But the concern was, was that, you know, they're, they're scoping the situation, trying to get the bosses of drug lords or this or that. And how long do they wait and put our children at risk? So like, how long does that, does that unravel? So that's, that's a concern going on in Ward 1 that I would just like to bring attention to everyone. Also, moving on, there's, there's a meeting, public hearing tomorrow with the flyover issue in Ocean View. This considered, continues to be a hot topic, even though, you know, we have some resolution and ideas about what's going to be done with the flyover. It stems directly into the VDOT issues and the meeting on September 8th. This is a huge, huge, huge issue and will be for the residents. The frustrations are high, mostly because there's no, it's like a shell game of traffic until the expansion project happens. So I know a cell phone here earlier, I don't know if she's still here, but she's volunteered to visit a lot of civic leagues to give information and explanation of what the VDOT meeting's going to be about September 8th, so people can give feedback. And that seems really imperative to, to partake in. We also have a lot of petty crimes and kinds of opportunity happening around Ward 1. And there's a lot of neighborhood watch initiatives going on, but I just kind of want to keep bringing this to the forefront. And finally, I just want to say thank you to all of you guys here.
We want to say thank you to you.
Yes.
I really want to say thank you to you. And I'm sure everybody else has their own way of saying thank you, but thank you.
You know, I came, I sat and I interviewed with you guys. I said I was going to do a few things. And I want to say that I think that a lot of them are moving along. I've met with Dr. Kip Rogers and Kanyetta Goshen and some of the school board members and they're moving promptly along with the Code Virginia stuff and it's pretty exciting. We're also talking in the future, we're going to loop around and see how we can get more business partnering as well as community partnering. So that's pretty exciting. The IT advisory, digital advisory, whatever we're going to call it, I mean, I've got commitment from different council, Councilwoman McCollum to keep pursuing that and some of the others, which may all. So I'm excited about that. I'm sure that we'll talk about that more. And, and, and just even with working with Bonnie Baker, even though I haven't been able to do anything with her specifically with veterans, I definitely let her know I'm committed to, you know, continuing to rally and, and work with her on all the issues with the military and the veterans in the area.
Hopefully, we can get some females on those committees.
Well, Nicole, actually, there's something that I want you to do. And when you finish, I want to tell you what it is. When you're ready, I'm ready to announce what I want you to do.
New job.
So, next year is the 100th anniversary of Naval Station Norfolk. And we're going to plan, we're going to establish a naval-based centennial commission. And this is, commission will plan an appropriate celebration, events around the city, the recognition of the centennial of Naval Station Norfolk. And I'm going to ask each of you to, to recommend, each council member to recommend a person to serve on the commission. And Nicole, you are my person to serve. And I will ask the rest of my council.
That would be my honor.
The second, the second thing I have is the tentative meeting for the, with the joint school board. A lot of you asked for the meeting. That meeting is tentative for September 27th. We'll do it at four o'clock. So we can go over to the screening of the premier at 8:30, thereabout. Also tonight, we're going to have a resolution for Paul Frame. Mayor Frame is unable to attend, but we have the resolution tonight. There's a confirmation, a letter appointing Lauren Anderson to a vacant position outside of the mayor's office receptionist. And, and I need your, again, your input on the, the commission. Lastly, there's a resolution for Andy and for Barclay. And we'll have, have those resolutions forthcoming.
Kenny, on board appointments, are we going to address that at the retreat?
We have, yes, we have some of your, some of your concerns that you have shared with me about the retreat, some of you have given names of persons that you want to be considered for wards as well.
So I know.
Yeah, because those should be for Brett, because Brett needs to get resumes.
It would be great to also know what is open in enough time so that we can start asking people.
We are.
We have a lot of openings, right?
We have that information and we can get that to you in paper, but we're trying to reactivate the Dropbox and send an invitation to everyone so you can get it through Dropbox as well.
So we'll just send the email.
But even if it was just like a one sheet of paper or something that just said, what's coming up and open, it doesn't, we don't have to have their resumes, just so.
Yeah.
You know, I know planning commission is going to have another vacancy soon. Nicole has expressed interest in that, so.
And they're allowed.
Yeah. We'll get, we'll get your paper, one pager, Tommy, with all the vacancies. Get it to, all right, see you upstairs.